I would like to call a November fourth meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners to war it this time and recognize that we do our quorum. And I would ask that everyone, including board members, silence your telephones so we don't have those to disturb us as we conduct our business here. I'll lead in an invocation and Commissioner Palmer will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. So if you desire, please pray with me. Father God, we thank you for this day that you've given us, the life that you've given us, the opportunity of assembling here today. We pray that, that our decisions will be in line with your will, your way, to the benefit of our county. In your holy name we pray, amen.
As we should do the pledge, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is discussion, adjustment approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved agenda as presented, Chairman Powell.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the agenda as presented in a discussion. Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number one is proclamation recognizes November as Adoption Awareness Month.
First I thank you all for the support and all of us to do this tonight. So here's the proclamation, so Adoption Awareness Month 2024. Whereas the annual observance of Adoption Awareness Month celebrates all North Carolina adoptions, and whereas this year's theme honoring youth, strengthening pathways for lasting bonds, highlights the importance of child welfare professionals helping young people build and sustain lifelong networks of support and community that provide a sense of belonging and relational permanency, this theme reflects one of the Children's Bureau's highest priorities, ensuring youth benefit from lasting relationships and have holistic supports and opportunities. And whereas young people deserve a strong support network that meets their needs, embraces and affirms their identity, and promotes family, community, and cultural connections, and whereas caring adults and committed families can make all the difference in the lives of young people, sibling groups, children with special needs, and teenagers. And whereas 11,020 children in North Carolina are currently in foster care, 1,249 children were adopted in 2022 in North Carolina, and 12 children were adopted in the 2324 fiscal year in Person County. And whereas each county department of social services in North Carolina works diligently to place foster children in adoptive homes, and whereas NC Kids Adoption and Foster Care Network within the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the Division of Social Services recruits adoptive, approved adoptive families with the hope of placing current children in foster care who are awaiting adoption, and whereas the state of North Carolina encourages communities, businesses, schools, faith-based organizations, families, and individuals to participate in efforts to recruit permanent living families for North Carolina's waiting children.
Now therefore, in recognition of adoption awareness, the Person County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Adoption Awareness Month in Person County, North Carolina, and commend observance to all citizens adopted this fourth day of November 2024. Signed Gordon Powell, Person Board of County Commissioners, and Michelle Solomon, Clerk to the Board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you this copy. Thank you in your department.
Yes, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we have a motion to approve that proclamation we just passed out?
Same move.
Have a motion for approval, any discussion, any other comments? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. So, thank you again so much, sir. Item number two on the agenda is public hearing, quasi judicial, SUP of 424, a request by the applicant and property owner Gary Garrett of 22.35 acres located along both sides of Thomas Road at tax map A9 or A9526 and A107142 to approve special use permit, SUP of 424, in an R C, or Rural Conservation Zoning District for the Garrett Recreational Vehicle Park Expansion per Section 6081155 of the planning ordinance. And so, do we have a motion to open the quasi judicial hearing?
Same move.
Have a motion to open the hearing in a discussion. Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. So, we will proceed. Are you doing this where you're standing?
Yes.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
All right, if I can have the following individuals, please step to the front, Gary Garrett, Nicole Tally, Laura Harper, and Susan Marks, and Catherine Cathy. If you can please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand.
Okay, excuse me.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. Chairman, we're ready for presentation.
Okay, and?
I will be presented.
Yes, gotcha.
Good evening Commissioners. I will be making this presentation on behalf of planning staff. Our former planning director, Chris Bowley, reviewed this application, prepared the staff report and presentation before he left, and that is what is included in your agenda packet tonight. So I will go through the information provided, and then we'll have the opportunity to hear from the applicant as well as others who are here to speak in favor of or against this special use application, special use permit application. This is for the Garrett Recreational Vehicle Park. The subject property is approximately 22.35 acres, is located along Thomas Store Road and Pixley-Pritchard Road, and it's in close proximity to the Roxborough Motorsports Park. This supports economic development in the area by supporting the adjacent sports park. The proposed RV park will include up to 15 pads for recreational vehicles. And upon review by planning staff, it has been deemed that the plan follows the planning ordinance criteria for location and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Compatible land uses, this is a compatible land use with existing uses and keeps the rural character of the area. I will note within your agenda packet, you do have the maps that have been included on the slides, as well as the staff report. So both of those are available for your review in a slightly larger format within the agenda packet. So this first slide, Exhibit A, is a general map of the area. As you can see, this special use permit application does include two parcels, A9526 and A107142. Thomas Store Road runs between the two parcels, and then Pixley-Pritchard Road borders one of the parcels on the other side. This is an aerial photo of the two parcels, again depicting the roads adjacent to the properties, as well as the motorsports park. The future land use map does designate both of these parcels as rural, as well as all of the adjacent parcels as depicted on this map. Exhibit D is the zoning map. This shows that the two parcels are currently zoned rural conservation, as well as all of the adjacent parcels. This is the site plan that accompanied the special use permit application. Again, there is one included in the agenda packet, which does have slightly more detail. But as you can see from Exhibit E, you can see running through the middle is Thomas Store Road. The triangular parcel to the left, as you look at this map, is the site of the existing RV park. So there are four RV pads that are adjacent to Thomas Store Road. There will be four additional pads on that particular parcel, which will have frontage on Pixley-Pritchard Road. And then the parcel that's across the street from Thomas Store Road would also include new RV sites. And with the four existing, the additional would bring the total to 15 RV sites between the two parcels. Findings of fact, per the Person County Planning Ordinance, the Board of Commissioners should address a findings of fact as listed in Section 155 to determine if the proposed use supports the comprehensive plan. From the findings of fact criteria listed in Section 155-3B, approval of special use permit application, SUP-04-24 supports the four findings of fact listed below. One, that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. There are no damaging materials at the RV park, the proposed park is designed to meet all Person County ordinances. That the use meets all required conditions and specifications. The RV park will meet all buffer and ordinance requirements for Person County. Three, that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. The Roxborough Motorsports Park is located across the road from A95-26 and beside A107-142. Race fans and RV users are using the park currently, and additional sites are needed to accommodate them. Four, that the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. The RV park is an asset to the community and more sites are needed to accommodate the RV users and Roxborough Motorsports Park customers. The RV park is a good fit for the area. So the potential motion to consider this evening, as well as the staff recommendation that has been included, the Plan and Zoning Department staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve special use permit SUP-04-24 for the Garrett Recreational Vehicle Park project with the following conditions and a potential motion. So the motion could be, I hereby move to approve special use permit 04-24 for the Garrett Recreational Vehicle Park project with the following conditions, and these are as recommended by planning and zoning staff. The applicant obtains all required permits from the County Environmental Health Department, Planning and Zoning Department, and Inspections Department. The applicant obtains required permits from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and any other agency to achieve construction, operations, and maintenance of the subject property. And three, the applicant installs a 100% opaque landscape screen with mature vegetation between the proposed four new camper/RV pads and homes along the north side of Pixley-Pritchard Road. That does conclude staff's presentation of this application.
Questions of Manager Kathy, anybody? None. Okay. And clerk then, do we have comments in favor or in opposition?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we do have one person signed up in favor of, the applicant Gary Garrett, with two individuals signed up as opposed.
Would you, would you call those, please?
Yes, sir. The first person will be Gary Garrett.
Good evening.
Evening.
I would like to expand the Garrett RV park from the four current sites to a total of 15. This means adding 11 new sites. I'm seeking a permit and approval for these. With the success of the four sites being 75% to 100% full, numerous weekly calls seeking availability, I feel expansion's needed in the area. This would increase county taxes, revenue, and promote local businesses. I keep my current sites clean and orderly, all my RVs are required to sign a set of rules and guidelines. If these rules and guidelines are not followed, the RVs are told to leave. I have not had any complaints or issues with any of the neighbors. I would appreciate your consideration and approval for this expansion.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we do have two for opposition. The first person we have signed up is Laura Harper.
Good evening.
Um, sorry, I'm not good to public speaker, so.
You're good.
I live on Pixley-Pritchard Road, and so I have a few concerns about it. First is the sign for this hearing went up Saturday, I believe, so we didn't have much notice as far as this goes again, and I believe the sign for the last hearing for the first location was the same thing where it just went up a few days before, which is kind of hard to get people organized for that. Then my biggest concern is that, you know, these are RVs that are supposed to be temporary living quarters, but since it's been almost a year since the first pad of four went in, and I and nor my neighbors have not seen one single RV move in that time, it is, it seems to be permanent residence. And according to the code references, you can't have RVs as a permanent residence like that. So, you know, I feel like that's kind of a, you know, it's against, it's against the code, these are, it's not, you know, when they first went in, we thought, okay, well people- These are, I, it's not, you know, when they first went in, we thought, okay, well, people will come in on the weekends and go in and out and go in, and there's nothing. There's been none of that. They have, they are there, they have grills out, they have, it's, it's permanent, it's permanent residence. And, you know, despite, um, what that presentation said, you know, I, I worry about people driving down the road, seeing a bunch of RVs that are permanent there, you know, driving. I, you don't know if any of you live across from them in your location, but I don't think you probably want to. Um, there are a lot of, the houses directly across from there are all stick-built houses. They've been there for years. Their property is, uh, you know, most of those properties are almost the same size, and they've got one septic system on a property that might be two or three acres. And now we're talking about having eight septic systems, or, you know, basically eight homes running septic on five acres, which seems, I'm not sure that that would pass any kind of other, you know, if we tried to do that on our own property, I'm not really sure that we would get away with that. And then, you know, now they're gonna, talking about putting it up on the other side, uh, next to the racetrack. And, you know, that's gonna be, what, eight more? So we're gonna have, uh, that's a lot of septic waste in that area. There was a pond, there's a pond on that property that, you know, and that it's been like, kind of a neighborhood, kids fishing that thing used, or used to fish in that all the time, you know? And, uh, obviously, he purchased the property, and it's his right to not let that happen. But, um, you know, it's just, it's, it's just not really what we expected when we, you know, I moved from Raleigh out to the country, so I could have property and have animals and all of those other things. And, you know, I knew the racetrack was there and that, fine, you know? But it's, over time, it's getting louder. They've entered, added an entertainment section that nobody was told about. And, you know, now we're starting to add RVs, permanent RVs there. So if nothing else, you know, I'd like to have that looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, we had a Susan Marks.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Dana, thank you.
I've been in Person County at my current address on Pixley Pritchard Road for thirty years. Um, I love that area and was blessed enough to get fifteen acres of land. And I moved in knowing that there was a drag strip. Um, to this day, the cars do not bother me at all. I enjoy it, I don't go necessarily as much as many other people do. But the noise from that does not bother me. Um, what's bothered me recently is there has been a music venue that has slid in that is so loud that when I call the police, they tell me there's nothing they can do about it. It's, um, it was approved, um, nothing they can do. Now, along with that, when you say it doesn't change the character of your land or the harmony of your land, when you build, bring in temporary travel trailers, I just say, if that happened across the street from you, would that impede on your harmony? Impede on your peace? Um, and if we cannot get anybody to volume, bring the volume down to make it livable, are we gonna have any help if we have any other problems? Um, it's a good community. It's a good farming area. And I wish that's what it would stay as. Of course, things do have to change, I understand that. I just don't know if temporary trailers are the way to make that happen. And that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes in favor of and the in opposition of.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to close the hearing? Motion on the floor to close the hearing. Any comments, questions? Here are none, all in favors, say aye. I oppose.
Mr. Attorney, she did not know she was allowed to sign.
This is my first time, I live on a, on, on Thomas Store Road.
That's of the pleasure of the board. You could reopen the hearing if you want.
Well, yeah, we're fine. But you would put your name.
Yeah, if we could just have a vote to reopen it, Mr. Chairman.
Right, yeah, and, so we have a motion to reopen the hearing, all in favors, say aye. All right. No, I'm in my security.
How's your name, please?
Did you get your name?
Um, my name's Chase Dew, and that's D E W.
And may I swear again?
Can't hear you.
Can you raise your right hand? I mean, your left hand, I'm sorry. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Isn't it? Thank you.
Um, I, I appreciate.
What was your name again?
Chase Dew.
Chase.
Dew, D E W.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I appreciate y'all for, for reopening. Again, this is my first time, I didn't know any of this was going on. Um, so me and my husband, we live on, uh, thirteen thirty-five Thomas Store Road, which is right beside the original park that's all, that, that's already built. And so the new park is planning to go right in front of my house in the, in, in the big field. Um, amongst everything that these ladies have said, um, on top of that, there have been several occasions where the children that are living at the park that's already there, um, have been in our woods behind our house. Um, it causes chaos with, with my dogs that are secure in the pen. We have a creek in the back that the kids are playing with them. Um, my husband has told them plenty of times, look, I sometimes hunt back here. It's not safe for, for y'all to be up behind the house. Um, and just, it's not something that you wanna see when you look out your, your window. You don't wanna look out your window in a country, um, peace setting and see a RV park, especially when it's a permanent, it seems to be a permanent thing. Um, so for those, those reasons, I do oppose.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So do we now have a motion to close the public hearing? Some of, motion on the floor to close the public hearing, all in favors, say aye. Aye. Oppose motion carried. Question for you, um, what is the issue there? Or how do we address the issue of permanent dwellings in these parks? Because not only this one, but others throughout the county. Is that complaint generated, or how do you?
Do you have a response? I'm trying to refer to the ordinance.
Yeah, if I can. So first thing that I think the board needs to understand is there's a distinction in our ordinance between camper RV park, so, you know, travel trailer, fifth wheel, that sort of thing, is different than mobile homes or manufactured home park. Um, and if we were talking about mobile homes or manufactured homes, those are permanent dwellings. Um, it's completely different regulation. This is really intended to be a space for temporary housing. So, uh, as the gentleman said in the application, you know, it's for people coming to the drag strip and that sort of thing. Um, I think if the board wants, you could ask a specific question to the, um, to the applicant to get more information about the use of, um, of its property. Or if you, as a board, feel that you have enough information, uh, now you're not required to do that.
Mr. Chair.
I do have a question. Cause of, Gary?
Yes, sir.
If you, if you go back to, I can try to. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett, I mean, um, do some of those RV users a day work at these construction sites that we have going on around here?
Some of them do, yes.
What would you estimate, seventy-five percent?
Maybe.
Three-quarters?
Seventy-five percent.
Okay. And, um, you've got how many current?
Four, four sites.
There's gonna be eleven more?
Yes.
Okay. But it's two different tracts of land.
Yeah, one's on one side, Thomas Store Road, and one's on the other side.
How many is on Pixley Pritch- Pixley Pritchard?
Backs up to Pixley Pritchard on one side.
How many is it gonna be in that parcel?
Eight.
Eight. That's all I got.
Mr. Mr. Garrett, on, on the septic waste that was, uh, brought up, excuse me, got a little bit hoarse, is, um, are you designed to handle that many right now? Or you're gonna have to put anything in?
Oh, I already got approval for all the septics, for all of the sites that I'm applying for. All that's been pre-approved.
Pre-approved.
I had to get all that before I could get a, even get an application in.
And how many did you apply for? Do you want to promote?
I applied for eleven additional. And I already had four.
So I guess my thing, well, Gary, I'll have a question for you, but, Manager Kathy, the notice going up, when are we supposed, how soon are we supposed to put the notice up to let the citizens and people who live around there know?
So the public hearing, and I, and I'll get to the signs, but as far as the timeline goes, the public hearing was advertised, um, in the Courier-Times, um, on the thirty-first and the twenty-fourth. Is that your recollection?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and the mailings went out to the, the property owners within the required, um, uh, limits that week as well. And then, when did you, I know you signed the signs out. Our ordinance requires that the property owner picks up the signs. I believe that you signed them out on the twenty-fifth.
Thanks, so Friday.
When did you place, which was Friday, the twenty-fifth, which was?
That's when they were put up.
A week and a half ago.
Yeah, they were put up on the twenty-fifth when I signed it, when I picked them up.
So I.
I just wanna make sure, did we give them plenty of notice?
Sure. And, um, so yes, those are the provisions of the ordinance, that the ad runs in the paper. For two weeks prior, we send out the mailings, um, that week. And then the applicant signs out, um, the signs and places them on the road frontage. So I don't have verification that they were placed that day, but that's, Mr. Garrett said he signed, signed them out on the twenty-fifth.
Picked them up when they called. Just gonna pick them up.
The signs. And, and put them out on the road?
Same day, yeah.
And my other thoughts on this, and I said this previous to, um, I don't know if it was in this meeting or not, but, um, with all the construction that's gonna be going on in this county over the next several years, um, one of the things that the people who are working, at those sites is housing, uh, where they can stay, where they can, in a temporary situation. And they're not going to, um, be able, I mean, they're not gonna finish a project in six months. It's gonna take some time for them to do that. So it's a little difficult to, um, sit here, for me, to sit here and say that if you got people working on projects in this county, um, that, you know, whatever the time, what you wanna call temporary or not, uh, they gotta pick up, move, then gotta come back. Um, and that just, you know, again, that, that bothers me a little bit because we do need, uh, these, um, employees, the people, uh, that are working on these, uh, buildings to be here. Um, I do feel bad that I know that, as Ms. Dew said, uh, that, you know, you look out your yard and you see the trailers or, or the campers. And, um, I know that's not something you want to look at every day. Um, also, look at this, is, uh, Mr. Garrett has an opportunity to put these pads. He's had the plans put in place. And I do believe that right close to the racetrack, as you are, that probably a lot of your, uh, people that will be using that will probably come into the races and then leave. However, the situation right here in this county, i- it wouldn't surprise me. I'll say that you've got seventy-five percent that are, um, staying, uh, somewhat permanent or whatever, or until the projects are up. So, um, it is, so it's a delicate thing, balancing act there. And again, um, that's just my concerns and my, my thoughts on this. Um, and the music venue that was brought up, um, I, I'm guessing that they've been permitted to have that?
I do not know the answer to the question about whether that's been permitted.
Cause I, I would think we would probably need a permit, or they would need a permit if they're having some type of music venues or something like that going on.
I would have to look and see what the venue is. And, um, I know the noise ordinance would apply, um, and there's a provision that applies specifically to the motor park, um, within the noise ordinance. But I'm not sure what type of facility they have there for music.
This is one of those things, I wanna make sure that, again, everybody's compliant, uh, to what needs to be.
I'll check on that.
Permits or anything of that nature. Mr. Garrett, you does the day-to-day monitoring here?
I do.
Okay. All right. So complaints along the lines of what we've heard would go directly to you.
Yeah, I hadn't had any complaints.
Yeah, well, future?
Till, till now.
Yeah, okay. Is any, is that area fenced in in any way we're talking about?
No, sir.
No? Okay, any plans for fencing?
I had not planned any of that.
Hmm, okay. The, the other thing with the kids running in the woods, that kids like to explore, do that sort of thing. But if it is a safety issue, especially during hunting season, I don't know if no trespassing signs would help, or if they're up, uh, possibly putting some of those up, uh, would, at least you have no trespassing. And if someone comes on your property, you have a, a legal stance on that. So it's just something to think about.
Question for the manager?
Yes.
Didn't we mention a, didn't you mention a buffer, a fence of some sort?
It was a, uh, let me pull that up. It was along Pixley Pritchard Road. That was one of the conditions, a one-hundred percent opaque landscape screen with mature vegetation, so not a fence, but vegetative screen between the proposed four new camper RV pads and homes along the north side of Pixley Pritchard Road.
Mr. G- Garrett, one thing, I guess, going forward, if, if approved, to reinforce with any tenants to remain on your property and to have dialogue with your surrounding neighbors to make sure they have their number if there's a complaint that they, that you can, um, make sure that that matter is, is taken care of on that. And so that's, um, one concern. But if you're saying, and you, you swore that you hadn't received no complaints?
I haven't seen.
I have to go by your, your word on that. And, um, so, but what was about a year or so ago when we had the initial?
Year and a half.
Okay.
Any other comments? Here are none, then. Item number three is consideration to grant or deny the SUP oh-four twenty-four request. And, uh, it could be amended, it could be added to, if you wanna put any stipulations to that as.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to move forward with the recommendations of the, um, Plan of Order approved special use permit SUP dash zero-four dash two-four for the Garrett Residential Vehicle Park Project with the following list that are, um, that are listed below.
As, as stated, as presented, okay. Uh, have a motion on the floor for the discussion? Here are none, um, all in favor of approving SUP oh-four twenty-four, say aye. I oppose. No motion carried. Item number four is adoption of the twenty-twenty-five Schedule of Values and Present Use Value Section. Uh, Russell Jones, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion of, of, carried.
Have a motion on the floor in a discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose none. Motion carried, thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
A presentation for you to get the Schedule of Values discussion started. Um, a lot of slides, but I do talk fast, so maybe it'll go pretty quick for us. So effective January first, twenty-twenty-five, and we are working with Pearson.
So, effective January first, twenty-twenty-five, and we are working with Pearson Reappraisal Service for this. And first of all, what is a reappraisal? It's a process of revaluing all real property in the county at true value or market value. And we emphasize real property because it does include vacant land, residential property, and commercial industrial property. What it does not include, and we're talking about reappraisal, doesn't include personal property and does not include state appraised. And the reason it doesn't include those is we're reappraising those every year. So every year we get a new value on all your cars, all your business equipment, and all your state appraised, which is your power plants, your telephone companies, natural gas, all that gets a reappraised every year. So the reason you want to reappraisal is required by general statutes. So we have to do a reappraisal every eight years. And you're probably thinking, well, we just did one in twenty-twenty-one, this is not eight years later. But we need to maintain equity, uniformity, pricing appreciation updates, and prevent loss from state appraised companies, and I'll explain what all those are. North Carolina General Statute, unless the county decides that they want to do a more frequent reappraisal, you're doing an eight-year reappraisal. We started, uh, probably in the early eighties doing a four-year reappraisal, with a couple of exceptions, we've always done a four-year. And that is definitely due to changes in market. So equity is the second reason. So equity is making sure all properties are appraised at the same level. You're gonna find, as the real estate market changes, some properties change faster than others. Some of them go up, some go down, so you want to keep that level fair. Uniformity is similar to equity, but, uh, you're trying to make sure you're appraising properties the same. So if you are adding for a house because it has a, a brick exterior, you want to add for all houses that have a brick exterior. That's an example of what uniformity would be. So all similar properties are praised the same. Over time, the cost to build houses goes up, that's materials and labor, and definitely has changed this time. And the only time you can change and add for additional depreciation is during reappraisal year. So, we're looking at changing the cost tables and changing depreciation. So the most important reason that we do the more frequent reappraisal in addition to equity is because our state appraised. So anytime you have a reappraisal, you're adjusting back to market. If you don't do a four-year reappraisal, the first, fourth, and seventh year has become very important. So at that fourth year mark, so twenty-twenty-four being our fourth year, so next year, if we had not done a reappraisal, based on our current assessment rate, we would have lost two-point-three million dollars to state appraised because they're getting appraised every year a hundred percent. And everyone else is getting appraised at current, the twenty-twenty-one reappraisal values, which is actually thirty percent less, we would end up having to give state appraised that same thirty percent off, just to be fair. That's why we do a more frequent reappraisal. So, people want to know what you're, when you're reappraised, what are you doing? We're actually trying to figure out what market value is. So things change in time. And a willing buyer, willing seller is your market value. So the market is actually set by the buyers and sellers. So people say the tax office raised my value, well, we really didn't raise your value, we studied the market to figure out what people were paying. So taxpayers are really setting the mar, setting the market value. So we're interpreting the value, we're figuring out what sold at market value, on-site transactions, and we're trying to figure out what drove that value so we can reproduce the value for unsold properties. So the Schedule of Values becomes just a guideline. It's how to appraise property in the county. The guideline we use for the next four years, until we do a four-year reappraisal next time. And we're looking at all the comparable sales, land improvements, and figuring out what people are paying for stuff. And of course, this is adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. These are the sales that we've studied in the last year and a half, almost two years. There's about fifteen-hundred sales. So you won't have a lot of sales when you do a reappraisal, that way you know what the market's doing. And when I look at that chart, I see we have sales everywhere. There's not a single spot, any single township that is lacking for sales, which is a good time to do a reappraisal. So when you look at the reappraisal, and I'm asking the board to look at a two-hundred-page manual, what would the board want to know? So the way we measure reappraisal to see if it's done correctly are these five measures. And I'll explain what they are. Sales ratio, the median, the mean, the PRD, price-related differential, or COD, coefficient of dispersion. Very far in terms for a lot of us, but they're pretty simple. So the, let me go back one slide. The sales ratio is taking the current tax value and dividing by sales price. So if it's properties, um, eighty-two thousand dollars on tax value, and sells for one-twenty, the sales ratio is sixty-eight percent. So it shows that you're low. Median is taking all of the sales and ranking them from the least, lowest sales ratio to the highest sales ratio. And you pick the mid, the midpoint, the middle of them. So then you know where your sales ratio is based on median. Mean is doing different, mean takes and averages those, instead of picking the middle one, it averages them. Price-related differential takes the median divided by mean. And why price-related differential is important, you're just trying to get a one. That means that you're valuing your low-end properties and your high-end properties both fairly. So if you have a PRD greater than one, it means you're undervaluing your high-end properties. Less than one, then you're undervaluing your high-end properties. Coefficient of dispersion is kind of your bell curve idea from your college days. Uh, it's a bell curve, you want all your numbers to be as close to the mid, midpoint as you can get. So you're trying to get a very low coefficient of dispersion. In a reappraisal year, you like to see something less than a ten. And after reappraisal, that number gets further and further away, which means you have more outliers, more properties selling for numbers that are way different than your midpoint. So when I take the old Schedule of Values in twenty-twenty-one, and I take the new Schedule of Values that we're talking about tonight, I have a sixty-eight percent sales ratio from the twenty-one. But when I do the new Schedule of Values, I'm at ninety-nine point four-eight. So the schedule seems like it works countywide. That indicates that we are forty-seven percent low right now, countywide. My PRD is a one-point-zero-two, these are new schedules, didn't change, so we were treating fairly low-end properties, high-end properties, both. My COD, so my outliers, I was getting further and further away, so I had more properties that were not near the midpoint. So the new schedule fixes that. And I got one for the City of Roxboro, similar, but the difference, um, isn't as extreme. So the City of Roxboro is looking like a twenty-seven and a half percent increase from the old schedule to new schedule. Mount Turza, it's just one township I picked just to see how that one looked, because we can do it by township, uh, in city, out of city. That one came in that it was actually about half price, because the median is at fifty-two, so we need a ninety-one percent increase in Mount Turza Township in order to make things back to market. Vacant tracts, vacant land by itself is a little bit more underpriced than the average improved lot, fifty-five percent increase needed there. This is the one that shocked me. So after COVID, people started wanting large tracts of land to build a single house. And you look at the twenty-one value for tracts that were ten to twenty acres, we're about a third of value with thirty-eight percent using the old schedule. With the new schedule, we're ninety-nine percent. But that's a two-hundred-and-sixty percent increase in value from what they were selling for just four years ago. So again, that's equity, we, if properties are selling that much different than they used to, you have to do a reappraisal. And again, my PRD is at one, my COD is getting better. High Co Lake is another good example. High Co Lake is indicating the increase need of fifty-five percent. Mayo Lake is not quite as extreme as High Co Lake, but needing an increase of fifty-two percent. And I like to go over just a handful of properties and what the schedule did to individual property. So here's one that sold July twenty-fourth for three-seventy-five. The old schedule had it valued at two-seventy-five. The new schedule values at three-seventy-three, so we're ninety-nine point five-two, so the schedule worked for that property. And that's an older house, uh, right outside the city limits. Brand-new house sold for three-forty-five in twenty-three. Using the old schedule, I listed it as a twenty-three because it's a brand-new house. Using the old schedule for twenty-one, it would have been valued at two-thirty-six. New schedule values at three-forty-six, or exactly at market. This is another sale, this is, um, a house in Flat River. It's built in nineteen-ninety-five, and the old value had it at one-eighty-seven. It sold twice, sold for two-twenty-nine, then went up again to two-sixty-five. So the new value, two-sixty-five, eight-two-two, exactly at market. So the schedule, again, is working. Uh, this is a house that was in, in this city limits remodeled. So it sold for one-thirty-seven in twenty-twenty, we had it valued at, at two-oh-three after it was remodeled in two thousand, in two, two thousand twenty-three. And then it turned around and sold for two-sixty-four, just this last April. So ninety-seven percent, we've actually a little lower on that one already. Uh, another new house, two-fifteen, old schedule would have valued at one-thirty-five, new schedule at two-nineteen. This is a older house in one of your, um, older communities. And was valued at fifty-two thousand, they did some remodeling. We, with the new schedule valued at eighty-seven, it sold for one-ten. So some of the older houses that have been remodeled are hard to understand the, the motivation of some of the buyers and sellers. That one is actually, it sold for one, I think it would in today's market. Another new house, again, um, it sold in twenty-three, so I understand why that one's overappraised at a hundred and four percent, because it's, the sale's a year and a half old. The market has continued to go up about four percent, four, one-hundred, one percent every month. And we've got some, some vacant land sales, this is on High Co Lake. We had it valued at a hundred and ten in twenty-one, it just sold for two-seventeen, sold for two-fifteen, and we have it valued at two-seventeen. And that's, uh, a sale that's eight months old, six months old. A house on High Co Lake, we had it valued at five-seventy-four, just sold for nine-seventy-seven. We have it valued at nine-seventy-seven, just sold for right at a million. So it shows how much the market has changed. Uh, this is another lot on High Co Lake, um, this one sold for three-ninety-eight, but it previously was over three-seventy-five, and previously was over two-forty. So you can see the increase, increase, increase in values. We had it two-seventy-one back in twenty-one, new schedule values at three-ninety-one. So again, we're right at market on these. This is a remodeled house, again, sold twice, three-fifty, three-seventy-nine, we're at three-eighty-two. This is a, just a vacant lot sale, sold for seventy-five hundred dollars in twenty-eighteen. We valued it ninety-four hundred dollars, just sold for thirty-seven thousand. We have it valued at thirty-four. That one sold for more than I think it should, it's off Pied Road, it's... Again, we're trying to figure out why people pay some of the prices, that one seemed like they paid a little bit more than I felt comfortable with. Another one, and this one here is one that sold for fifty thousand in twenty-two, we had it valued at twenty-two thousand back in twenty-one. Then it turned around and sold again for eighty thousand two years later. So we're, again, we're a hundred percent at market. So it shows that the Schedule of Values went applied appropriately to get you back to market with some tremendous increases on some of these properties. Um, this is, and just, I thought I was done, have one more, maybe? We're at fifty thousand back in twenty-one, we were fifty-one thousand, but we're right at market, it's over one-sixty-five. So, it's over one, we're at one-sixty-two, seven-nine, we're right at, right at market again. So what's next in the reappraisal process? We have finished taking photos of all the properties, we've done pretty much all the legwork, we're going to continue to apply the Schedule of Values. And what's up for t- tonight is the actual presentation. We have advertised the Schedule of Values in the newspaper for thirty days, as required. Um, so now we are able to do a formal adoption if the board sees fit. This county, the citizens have thirty days after adoption of the Schedule of Values, they can appeal to the state if they, uh, so, want to do so. Uh, so if you adopt tonight, December fourth will be the final, no appeal after that. Uh, with the next step after the Schedule of Values is done, we are looking around mid-January, having the, the schedule applied to all properties. Uh, sometime, probably late January, maybe as it lays early February, we'll send notices out to all the citizens that know their values, we start February through March doing informal appeals. That's where your board and, my, my, where my staff will actually work with them, and Pearson's staff. April through July is when the Board E and R will meet and hear the appeals, and the Property Tax Commission can be brought in if they appeal to Board E and R within thirty days. After getting their information from the Board E and R's decision, they're gonna go to the state level. Uh, North Carolina does have a very fair system as far as your appeals. Informal takes care of most of it. Board E and R is your second level, third level, Property Tax Commission is the fourth level, Court of Appeals. Very fair process, but this is the biggest increase we've ever had for a schedule for a four-year reappraisal cycle. And if you, out in the real estate market, you see these prices, it's very shocking. So if you, what questions do you have, and are you comfortable to adopt the schedule?
Russell, so the tax rate when the notices go out also be reflective of what was approved in the previous budget? And this is my third reevaluation, to be involved with the previous two. We did not, um, take a revenue neutral approach in regard to the tax rate. If a future board, let's say, um, in June approves a, or have any neutral, um, tax rate, would that tax rate take, moment that tax rate take in effect, would it be the tax rate that's currently now, that's when the notices go out, or would that, those tax bills change?
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna separate that into two answers for you, just, okay? So the revenue neutral rate is published, so the citizens know what the rate would have been if the county did not have an increase in revenues. The appeals are not based on the tax bill.
Yes.
Um, we won't know the tax bill during the appeals process. We normally don't set the tax rate to June thirty, appeals are all but done by then. If the, your property goes up less than average, and the county does adopt a revenue neutral rate, your tax bill will probably go down.
It will.
So that's, if you go less than average.
I'm looking at the timing of it.
Um, so you, there have been a couple of counties out there that went ahead and said what the, their tax rate was gonna be before notices went out, but that is uncommon. It, this doesn't change the County Commissioners' responsibility during the budget process at all. You, the only thing you really can control is that tax rate. You can't control your federal grants, your state grants, your sales tax. So when you decide what level of services you're gonna provide, the only thing left is to figure out the tax rate against the property valuation. So it really is, set the value first, set the tax rate during the budget process. But this, the tax rate set by the board in June will be based on the values that will be sent out this year in January.
And when, and this is a manager, uh, question for county manager, because for the budget work sessions that we begin, well, the retreat, would we have an answer of what the, um, revenue neutral rate would be in February? I mean, so we can have that in the back of our mind when we begin budget work sessions in May and June?
So as far as calculating that, we'd...
Or do you have to wait till all the appeals?
That's what I was saying, we'd want to get through the majority of the appeals so that we would know what that tax base looks like, because that's a factor in calculating the revenue.
It's, it's normally done as part of the, the final budget adoption, but we can give some insight of how it's looking. There would not be a formal revenue neutral rate, it would just be an estimate. Because we have no idea when we send out notices, how many appeals we have, and what the board may do or may not do as far as the tax appeals.
Okay.
Uh, so it really is a, a June thirty number that's published.
Okay. Just educating myself.
Um, yeah, I understand.
Because I never had to deal with revenue, uh, revenue. Had to deal with revenue, uh, revenue neutral rate before on that appeal, it may be prudent on this dial.
I don't think there was a single county last year who did a reappraisal that went as low as revenue neutral. It is uncommon to go all the way down to revenue neutral. Easily cut your tax rate when you have a huge increase. But going revenue neutral is not a very common process. It's normally going to be a little bit higher than neutral.
Is there still a, a vacancy on the E and R board right now, or has that been filled?
And that, the vacancy has been filled, however, uh, the vacancy filled the unexpired term of Lake Curtis Bratcher. So the, all board members are up for reappointment in January. So the, the whole bo, the whole board needs to, get, all of them can be reappointed if they want to be, but we, the whole board is up for reappointment.
Any further, um, questions, comments? Thank you very much, sir.
The, on the motion to adopt, there is two separate motions.
Okay.
And I'd like to explain why that is, because it seems kind of odd. The present use value section is given to us by the state and we can adopt their rates. So we adopt that. We do always use their rates, almost every county does. And then the rest of it is our work. So the state asks us if we're going to use their schedule to do, adopt it separately. So if someone appeals their section, then they have people to help us with the appeals on the schedule itself.
Okay, we'll make those motions, I guess, as we close the public hearing. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Madam Clerk, do we have, um, citizens speaking in lobby season two or any comments from?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. There's no individuals signed up in favor of or in opposition of.
Okay, do we have a motion then to close the public hearing?
So move.
Motion on the floor to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Here none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Uh, so, um, item number five would be consideration to adopt the twenty-twenty-five schedule of values excluding the present use value section. Um, do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll let y'all make that motion. I'll probably be fighting some of it.
By the end of, you might forget. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, but I don't know exactly. Is it one oh-five dash two eighty-three? And there's supposed to be two of them, correct?
Yeah, so the first one. Get the numbers right.
I don't see the other one, Russ, although somebody helped me.
Okay, the first one.
It's item five and item six on your agenda, so you're adopting the present use value schedules, which is just two pages out of the manual.
Right, okay. Have a motion on the floor for adoption. All, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. And, uh, then the second motion would be, would you state that for clarity to whomever would like to make the motion?
We got the most, the second one is adopt everything excluding the, the section you just adopted, everything, but hey, he's twenty-six and twenty-seven.
All right. So do we have a motion for, for that adoption?
Uh, motion to adopt, is it GS one oh-five, two seventy-seven point six? I know I'm getting you confused. I'm confused today.
Schedule values. Adopt scheduled values.
Uh, make a motion to adopt the scheduled values.
That's sufficient, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for adoption. Any questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried.
You were looking at the, uh, the consent agenda item.
Yeah, okay.
You got too many pages. It ain't for three hundred and some pages.
Sorry.
And just to go back to your question about when the revenue neutral tax rate would be available, um, it will be available in advance of the manager's recommended budget. So that will be something that we'll be talking about leading up to that particular point in the process. I'm just not sure how much earlier than that. Like if it would be available for the retreat and we may have like a rough estimate, I don't, we may not be further, far enough along in the process yet, but when it comes down to the budget work sessions in between managers recommended and commissioners approved, then you'll have that for discussion purposes then.
All clear? Okay, at this time, uh, on our agenda, we do have our public comment period set aside, uh, ten minutes and, um, allow citizens to bring their concerns forward to the board. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. We have one individuals, excuse me, one individual, Andrea Childers.
All right. Thank you.
And if I can please instruct IT to set the timer for ten minutes?
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea Childers. I've lived in Person County as of Thanksgiving Day for thirty-two years. On November sixth, twenty twenty-three, I presented this board with two hundred and sixty questions from the community members of Mariah about the Mariah Energy Center. To this day, most of those questions have gone unanswered. This evening marks one full year of me coming to every meeting and speaking before this board. I have been here to inquire, to inform. Sometimes I have spoken out of anger and other times just out of pure desperation. Every single time I've spoken before you, it was to protect my home and to protect my community. Sadly, my words have fallen on deaf ears. I know you guys are currently reveling in the Microsoft deal. As you should, but then I have to ask myself two questions. Have you Googled the environmental impact of a data center? And what that will be on Person County? And my second question to that is, why have we not heard about how many jobs this deal is going to create? And I think we all know the answer to both of those questions. However, it is my time to say goodbye to this board. This is the last time I will come and speak before this board, as it will change come tomorrow. I'm sure there will be other times that my friends will ask me to speak on their behalf. And I will happily continue to be their voice. So I'll be back at some point to inquire and to inform. And when I return, there will be new faces sitting before me. And I hope that these new faces will be open to listening and to representing the citizens of Person County. Remember, commissioners, you reap what you sow. And so far, I have only seen this board reap voices. Thank you and goodbye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our informal comment period.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number seven on agenda is discussion adjustment approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a, a motion to accept?
So move.
Have a motion to approve. Any comments, questions? Here are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. New business, item number eight, Person County, City of Roxborough, continuity of operations plan or what we call the C O O P, uh, Mr. Swannenberg?
Let me see.
Tom.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. I'll hear the, uh, this evening to talk to you about the continuity of operations plan. So the continuity of operations plan is a requirement, uh, by the federal government and the state government for, uh, having a plan for how the, uh, county is going to, uh, continue to provide services in the event of a disruption of those county services. There we go. Um, so the requirements are there, uh, in the packet before you, but the purpose is to make sure that we're able to plan and respond to and recover from either a natural or man-made emergency or disaster and still provide us, uh, essential services. So there's really five key focus areas to a COOP plan. Uh, one is life safety. So of course, we want to minimize, uh, loss of life, injuries and property damage, and we'll talk more about that in essential functions. Uh, reduce service disruptions to the services that we provide to the citizens and reduce the severity of those disruptions if possible. Uh, get services back online, uh, again, focusing on essential services first and then non-essential services. And then protecting essential facilities and equipment, protecting the assets, uh, in, in taxpayer dollars. And then recovery, making sure that we can track costs and loss of revenue, uh, so that we can get reimbursed, uh, if reimbursement is available for those costs. So here in the county, our COOP plan, um, uh, trying to look back historically, uh, the first COOP plan I could find was written back in two thousand and three. And it was a, it was actually a D R P plan, which is a disaster, disaster recovery plan. It wasn't actually a COOP plan, uh, in accordance with the federal guidelines. Uh, then there was a revision done in two thousand and twelve. And then in two thousand eighteen, we actually had our first COOP plan, uh, and this, uh, basically, uh, there was a contractor that was hired to write the COOP plan, uh, for the county in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, in reviewing the COOP plan, uh, basically after the cyber incident that occurred here, uh, and, and coming, uh, coming into this position, uh, one of the things that, uh, the department had said was they didn't feel the COOP plan really, uh, met the needs of the county. So, uh, one of the, one of the tasks that I took on was doing a revision of the COOP plan. So the, the process that we, that we, that we undertook was, uh, first was to develop a standardized template that could be used for, for all departments, uh, to capture sort of that essential information. So if you, when you look through the COOP plan, uh, that was provided to you, every department, it basically follows the same essential format. And that was done for ease of finding information so that, uh, when we're looking through that, uh, it, the, the format's the same. And then we sort of did sort of a three-step collateral collaborative process with every department, both with, with the county and with the city of Roxborough. So we met with every single department and went through the template with them and captured the information for the templates. Um, then we, we, uh, massaged that, filled out the template, sent it back to, to the department heads so that they can meet with their staff and make sure that the information that was captured was correct. Uh, and then that information was sent back to us. We finalized it, sent it back for our final review. And then the next step to this process was meeting with the county manager and the city manager, uh, to gain concurrence on the essential tasks. And what I mean by that is, remember, this is a continuity of operations plan for county government. And not to imply that any county service that is provided is, is less important than another. But when we talk about essential tasks, we're really talking about tasks that impact life safety, uh, incident stabilization or property conservation. And that's, that's the process we went through to determine what tasks were essential versus non-essential. So again, not, not trying to make any department feel less important than another, but one could probably argue that nine-one-one dispatch services are probably a little more essential than being able to check out a book at a library. So we went through and sort of prioritized what were essential tasks versus non-essential tasks. What services needed to be brought online first and then secondary and then tertiary after that. Once we had concurrent, uh, concurrence from city and county management, uh, we did get the North Carolina Office of Emergency Management to do a review, uh, of the plan as well. It's important to note here that you as a board are not required to adopt this plan. Uh, you are required to adopt the emergency operations plan. You're not required to adopt the COOP. Uh, myself and the county manager though felt that it was important that, uh, we bring this before you for adoption uh, because this is how the county will continue to provide businesses or provide services in the event of a disaster. The COOP plan elements, uh, basically, uh, the format follows, uh, department overview, uh, succession plan and delegation of authority. So for every department, we went three-deep in every department as far as, uh, succession planning and, uh, delegation of authority for those tasks. Key documentation and policies, again, focusing on what, uh, those people in that succession plan needed to uh, have access to, to conduct business, whether those be hard copy documents, electronic documents, et cetera. And then again, focusing on what functions were essential and what functions were non-essential. Next, we focus on staffing. Uh, what would be the absolute minimum staffing that had to be provided, uh, in the event of an emergency? And then what is the preferred staffing? And again, you'll notice in the document, we've, we refer to that by position, not by name. So if we had to reach out to a neighboring county or the state and request resources, um, you know, we're talking apples to apples. We're looking for a person who has the ability to do this or has this function uh, versus using names. And of course, as people change, that becomes hard to keep up with. Equipment and systems, uh, if you think back to the cyber event, um, what equipment and systems do we need to provide those services? What equipment systems are housed internally versus being housed externally by third parties? Um, what systems may be impacted, again, if we were to have a cyber event, uh, versus those that may be, uh, protected differently because they're being hosted by a third party? Files, records and databases, uh, where are they located? How are they stored? How do we get access to them? Do we physically have to move them in the event of a flood, tornado, something like that? Uh, and again, same thing for electronic files. Alternate locations, um, for example, if this building were to be impacted by, say, a tornado, flood, something like that, where would we set up offices? Uh, one of the things that we discovered in the old COOP is pretty much everybody was moving to the same place, which just isn't feasible. Uh, so, you know, and then at those locations, what services needed to be there, such as public-facing spaces, uh, computer access, phone access, et cetera. And then communications, this was important for particularly the larger departments, D S S, health department, et cetera. How would they communicate with their staff in the event of an emergency or disaster, uh, to make sure their staff was aware? And then probably the largest part, again, this went from about a thirty-five-page document to almost a three-hundred-page document. Probably the largest part of the document became the appendices. Uh, everything in the document, uh, was, was tabulated into appendices so that very quickly we could ascertain information, uh, insofar as, um, trying to, if we had to go search for specific information, we weren't having to look at each department individually. We could refer to the tables to find the information that we need. As, uh, departments change, as information in the department change, the document is set up, set up. So as we change it in the departments, the tables will automatically update as well. Um, the last, uh, appendix there is appendix M is corrective action plan. Um, we'll talk about that in, in the next two slides. Some additional notes to the COOP, um, again, all emergencies and disasters are local and they're all unique. Uh, if you think about, uh, the events that happened out in western North Carolina, it's a reasonable expectation that we will be on our own for the first seventy-two to ninety-six hours. So we need to have a plan in place for how we're going to function. So every disaster is local initially. Um, the COOP provides a framework for how we're going to do this, but because every disaster is unique, it doesn't answer all the questions. It just gives us a starting point. Again, the COOP is how the city and county are going to, uh, function, uh, uh, continue to provide governmental functions. It is not the emergency operations plan, but a COOP activation may very well, uh, also coincide with an activation of the emergency operations plan. Uh, I keep referring to this as the county-city plan, uh, at least to what I could find. I could not find a, uh, document that actually had the city and the county, uh, doing this concurrently or together. Uh, so worked with this, uh, city management to do this as a collaborative document. Uh, because if it affects us, it's probably going to affect them and vice versa. So it made sense to do this as one document. Um, uh, working with the city manager, city council, we will present this to city council as well, uh, once, once it goes through the boards, uh, commissioners. Um, uh, also noted, just a note, is that the Department of Information Technology does have a disaster recovery plan. It's referenced in the COOP. It's not included in the COOP. It's a very large, very complicated document, but for security reasons, it's not attached to the COOP. It's its own separate plan. Plan maintenance, um, this is a, not for public dissemination. Um, this is an official use document. Um, uh, it's a living document. There will be very few hard copies printed, just in a few key locations. Uh, it will be maintained internally on our intranet, uh, so that as we up, so it's easier to update without a bunch of hard copies floating around. Uh, it will be reviewed annually, um, and also be reviewed after any exercises or activations. Um, if the board. If the board chooses to adopt the plan, we will then implement a exercise plan to ensure that we test the plan and that the, and staff stays up to date with the plan. So, our recommended action is, we're requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt the COOP plan, and I will answer any questions if you have it.
So, you have or have not met with the city yet?
No, sir. I was gonna meet with you first and then present it to the city.
Okay.
I've met with city management, but not city council.
Can I ask you something? As Tom was presenting, I realized I had not emailed the PDF version of the plan to you. So, that was an oversight on my part. Tom sent it to me a few weeks ago, and I have it ready to email now. He's given you a good overview, but I recognize you do not have, you have not seen those 300 pages that he just referenced, so.
And that was my question, because I didn't know if it was something that I had overlooked and not seen it yet.
No.
You know, if we're approving a plan, not saying that I would disagree with anything on it, I think it would be prudent to at least give us a chance to just look through it and feel comfortable on it and bring it back up at the next meeting once we've been afforded the opportunity.
And I will send it right now.
Okay.
And just forward along what Tom had sent to me, and again, I must have gotten distracted following that conversation.
I just have a question. Is there, I guess, is there a cost to this plan for us?
No, this plan just outlines how we will respond in these types of situations, so it identifies who's responsible for what and, you know, how we'll implement our emergency.
I mean, I just saw things that mentioned about equipment, and I was just wondering if something was gonna come up later saying we needed that equipment for whatever reason.
No, the equipment list is, again, let's, using the example, something happens to this building, that equipment list allows me to go to the state and say, I need 37 computers, 45 phones. What do we need as a government to function? And then, we start sending those requests into the state to say, this is what we need, versus us having to do it off the top of our heads. We've already generated the list.
Got inventory?
Yep.
Okay.
The one thing, since Ms. Kathy mentioned it, the version of the PDF that she's gonna send you, I had to break it into chunks so that it could be emailed, so the tables are broken just because of the way it's gonna have to be emailed, but the tables do work. They're gonna be broken in the email, so.
Any other questions? If not, I guess we just need to table this for adoption at the next meeting on the 18th?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to table this until the next meeting?
Motion to table until next meeting.
Motion to table. Any further discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
And item number nine on our agenda is addition of board appoint committees. Kathy?
Sure, I'll get it started.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll get it started. So, Janet and Tom are here as well to talk through the possible addition of three board-appointed committees. Within your agenda packet, you do have a list of our current committees. The timing of this would work out well because we'll be advertising beginning next week for volunteers to fill seats that will become available end of this year, as well as any new seats that need to be filled. So, the three committees that we would like to discuss tonight would be the Local Emergency Planning Committee, the LEPC, the Child Fatality Task Force. I think, were we gonna name that Child Fatality Local Committee, like Local Team? And then, the America 250th Committee. So, first, Tom would like to give you an overview of the LEPC.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
So, the Local Emergency Planning Committee is federally mandated entity comprised of government officials, business representatives, and members of the press. The role of the LEPC is to form a partnership with local governments and industries. As a resource for enhancing hazardous material preparedness, local governments are responsible for the integration of hazmat planning and response within their jurisdiction. This includes ensuring the local hazard analysis adequately addresses hazmat incidents, incorporating planning for hazmat incidents into the local emergency management plan, and annexes, assessing capabilities and developing hazmat response capability, using local resources, mutual aid, and contractors, training responders, and exercising the plan. In the wake of the Bhopal disaster in India in the 1980s, Congress passed the Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act, known as EPRA, also known as the Title III of the Superfund Amendments and Reauthorization Act, CERA. In 1986, EPRA establishes requirements for businesses and for federal, state, and local governments regarding emergency planning and community right-to-know reporting for hazardous chemicals. The community right-to-know provision in EPRA helped increase awareness about the presence of chemicals in their communities and releases of these chemicals into the environment. As a result, communities working with industry are better prepared and able to protect public health and the environment. The membership for the LEPC comes from the local area and should be familiar with factors that affect safety, the environment, and the economy of the community. That expertise is essential, as the LEPC advises the writers of the local emergency management plan, so that the plan is tailored to the needs of the planning district. In addition to the formal duties, the LEPC can serve as a focal point in the community for information and discussion about hazardous substance emergency planning and health and environmental risks. Currently, the LEPC functions as a standalone committee within the Person County Office of Emergency Management. In an ongoing analysis of OEM projects and responsibilities, a review of the LEPC program was conducted, and several areas of opportunity were found to strengthen the program. Additionally, in 2025, the North Carolina Office of Emergency Management is going to be focusing more on LEPC involvement within their communities to strengthen those relationships so communities are better prepared. As part of this analysis, staff has determined that it makes for good governance to elevate this committee to a board of commissioners-appointed committee to give the recognition it deserves and to better assist the board of commissioners in making decisions on issues regarding hazardous material planning, response, and mitigation. The composition of the membership of the LEPC is listed in Section 301 of CERA Title III. The LEPC committee must be made up of at least one individual from each of the following categories: state-local official, law enforcement, first responder fire, emergency management, health, broadcast communication media, print media, emergency medical services, transportation, local environmental group, community group, facility owner-operator, and other or at-large community member. This is considered the minimum membership list, but the local jurisdiction can add additional members if they choose to do so. Staff would like to recommend adding the following positions to the minimum membership list for Person County LEPC: Roxborough Person County Rescue Squad, Person Memorial Hospital, Person County Chiefs Association, an additional facility owner-operator, and a member of the Economic Development Department. That's our recommendation at this time.
So, this committee has existed over time, as you've heard, but this would more formalize the committee. It would solicit volunteers through our normal process of opening up applications on a routine basis, and then the appointees would come before you for approval and appointment to this committee.
Motion to approve this with the recommended positions. I will say that I do serve on that committee, representing the county, and so this can potentially add some more structure to that.
Any other comments? From these various groups, like local environmental group, do you want one person representing that group? How's that going?
So, CERA basically says a minimum of one. That would be up to, that would be up to the board if you want to add additional. Yes, sir.
But not necessarily.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all with setting this up. I just, when we, you know, when we sit down, we look at all the committees that we have, and then I think about how many of these committees you have county commissioners on, serving. It's, you know, again, and how often they meet can be challenging. What's your, what's the, when do y'all meet, or how often do you meet?
So, what we'd like to move to is a quarterly meeting schedule.
Previously, it was once a year.
Yeah, currently, it's once a year, but honestly, that's not enough to keep people engaged, so we'd like to move to a quarterly meeting schedule.
Okay, we have the motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, and Janet is going to present information about the next proposed committee.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Since the early 90s, each county of North Carolina has had two teams, one being a child fatality prevention team and one being a community child protection team. The health department has coordinated the fatality review team, and social services has coordinated the protection team. And then, in 2023, a legislation passed doing away with those two teams and combining those. They are making changes at the state level as well. What we find here locally is that a lot of the membership duplicates itself, it's a lot of the same agencies, so now these agencies would meet together. Currently, the fatality team meets quarterly, and the new minimum requirements will be at least twice a year, up to quarterly or as needed, depending on the deaths. The child fatality team is responsible for reviewing any child death that is nonaccidental under the age of 18. There are three positions that the Board of Commissioners would, by the legislation, would be required to appoint. One is a local law enforcement officer, an emergency medical services provider or firefighter, and then a parent of a child who died before reaching the child's 18th birthday. I have also provided the other list of positions and who would appoint those. Some of those are directors or other agencies, such as the superintendent of schools. And since the Board of Commissioners also serves as the Consolidated Human Services Board, there is a requirement for a member of the Person County Board of Social Services or the board most similar to that board, so it would be a representative from your board as well. I have met with the Director of Social Services, as well as his deputy director, and our coordinator for the Child Fatality Prevention Team. There are two options. The county could remain as a single local team, or we could join with other counties. The legislation allows for that, but staff recommend keeping this as a single-county review team for simplicity and logistics.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to recommend Person County continue as a single-county local team and request that this board's on confirmation of this operational model.
Have a motion on the floor. Further discussions, questions? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Good job. Thank you.
And I'll do the next one. So, we did receive information from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources about the America 250 NC program. So, they are encouraging all counties to establish an America 250 committee, and this committee would work towards the year 2026, in which the United States will commemorate the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. If we have a committee that the county has approved through a resolution to make it our official America 250 committee, we would be eligible to apply for a $10,000 grant with no match requirement to use towards a variety of projects, including planning, exhibits, events, public art, or other qualified projects to commemorate this anniversary. This committee does not necessarily need to be a county committee. That's just one option that I would like to put out there for your consideration. This could be a committee that is convened by the museum or by another entity within the county with the Board of Commissioners' support, as identified through passing a resolution. The state recommends that the local committee include representatives from museums and historic sites, local libraries and archives, tribal representatives, local history and cultural groups, education, military veterans, veterans organizations, tourism, economic development, local governing body. So, that's a wide array of people who are suggested to be involved in this. If you were to appoint a county committee to do this work, we would need to designate a staff liaison to that committee. It would be a public body, so the meetings would be open to the public. We would have those noticed on a regular meeting schedule. We would do agendas, and we would need to do the minutes for that committee. So, that's one thing to consider if it is a county committee. An alternative is to continue to reach out to some of the other organizations in our community to gauge their interest in convening and leading a committee. I have reached out to Kerry Currie at the museum, as well as Julie Mayby at the TDA. They are both interested in participating on the committee, but don't, aren't quite sure if they would have the capacity to take the lead on a committee, and that too would require their board approval for them to do so. So, that's as far as I've gotten in terms of gauging interest. I've heard from a couple of our staff who are also interested in participating, our library director and public information officer are both interested in participating on the committee. And I'm sure there's others. I've just heard from those two specifically.
Well, when I first received that email asking about Person County joining in on this official American 250 celebration, I immediately forwarded it to Manager Kathy. I, you board members can speak your piece here on this and speak your part on this, but that's American history and much to be thankful and grateful for and participate in, so I think it's a very good thing for us to proceed with, but, board members.
One thing, so we have a list. You've already mentioned you reached the TDA and the museum, and they want to participate, but don't know if they'd be able to take the lead in that. But what I would, before we form another county board, maybe we want to just go down this list, maybe the veterans may be interested in taking up the, taking up this as an official committee, and, you know, I just, you know, want to reach out to each one of these parties listed to see if they have an interest, being that we've already spoken to two of the, on this list, just to gauge if they are just interested in participating, or they just, or they really want to engage and run, and run the show with this. And if not, we can certainly revisit this to make it a county committee, but I would like to give these other groups the opportunity to take the lead if they choose to do so on that.
How did those two approach you about that? Have they?
Well, they were actually on the email that the state sent, and so I reached out to them in follow-up because they had already gotten the information to see if it was something they were interested in doing. So, when the state emailed us, they included them as well.
Those two were?
The Museum of History, so Katie Currie, and then the TDA, Julie Mayby. They had also copied Von Jaeger, who's our library director, and he did respond to me that he would be happy to participate on the committee as well, and then they copied the Kirby Theater. I did not reach out to them specifically because I wasn't sure if it, it seemed to fit better to me with the museum or the TDA than with the Kirby, but I can certainly reach out to them, to Aaron, as well there.
Well, I think it's... I think it's not only valuable, but it's going to take a lot of time and planning pulling forward. So the sooner we get organized and start moving, it would be wise. So, so how do you propose to actually do that?
Look, the board would like to explore whether there are, you know, who exactly from this list of suggested groups would be interested in participating or potentially taking the lead on a committee. I can certainly reach out to them via email and on behalf of the board over the, over this coming week to see.
I mean, each group, I mean, has, you know, like with the library, you have Friends at a Library, which is an organization. You have, you know, the Veterans Council. You know, I just want to see if they, if there is an interest for them to take the lead. If not, fine, bring it back to us and, and we'll make, we'll make it a county.
So we just have a consensus on that. We don't, we don't need any kind of official vote.
We've described direction.
Heard direction, yeah.
Sure. I'll see if I can get responses in time to bring it back on November eighteenth. If not, then we could do that at the beginning of December and consider it.
Okay, several things here. We still have a couple of hours, don't we, Madam Clerk? We have plenty of time. Of course, we're looking forward to tomorrow's election date, and I think over fifty percent of our voters have voted already in early voting. The one question I keep hearing is who do I vote for? I don't know. What I would look for would be a county commissioner that would be honest and vote with integrity and vote for the entire county and not be partial to any particular group, in my opinion. You form your own opinion as voters and, but just get out and vote tomorrow, being the final day for that. I've seen several green lights in windows, including the one here in this building and around town. And that's, that's good in support of our veterans. And recently, this past week in particular, we've had several veterans programs or events that, that went on with a, with a parade and another at the museum. And then Saturday was a Veterans Ball, which was well-attended and, and quite impressive. And those vets do a tremendous job in our county, and support to them, I think, is of great value to this commission board and citizens of Person County. I did attend the Person Industries banquet, which is a very good event for a deserving set of people in our county, especially those that have handicaps and can't do for themselves. We do provide lots of services through and by Person Industries, and an outstanding event, I believe. Also there, we did have a EMS fundraiser event, I believe. Mr. Swallowberry was, was in attendance there, and that was done at the request of a Rancho Restaurant. Very good gesture on their part, and appeared to me to be very well-attended by the public. Did have a health board meeting, and then we had an employee celebration, celebrating the employees of our county at Huxley's Berry Park here. Those were some of the things that we've done or has come about for our opportunities in the, in the past few days. Otherwise, I believe probably most of our citizens, as well as others around the state and even beyond, have heard Microsoft's announcement regarding the purchase of the Person County Mega Park. This announcement is a, is huge for Person County, and will go down in history as one of the most important economic developments ever in our county. A little bit of history and in comparison, some important historical economic announcements in Person County were the establishments or establishment of Roxboro Cotton Mills in 1899. A very important date in history in Person, in the history of Person County. In 1923, Collins and Ekman announced their presence in Roxboro in Person County. In the early sixties, then CPNL, now Duke, announced plans to construct power plants in Person County, and later a second announcement of new plants in 1983. And of course, along the way, there have been other important economic developments for which we are truly grateful. That being said, Microsoft's announcement that they were coming to Person County will be, in my opinion, one of the most significant economic development announcements in county history. This announcement is a culmination of several years of work by Person County's Economic Development Department and county commissioners. And I would have to say hats off to EDC Director Brandy Lynch for her leadership throughout this process. She was indeed the tip of the spear in the, in the negotiations. And I, along with Director Lynch, County Manager Kathy, and PCBIC in, in one capacity, along the way, most of us, with the exception of PCBIC, were under a nondisclosure agreement, what we call an NDA. We couldn't talk about it. I couldn't talk about it to, to my peers, which was hard because naturally, they had lots of questions, as, as the public did as well. But we worked through that because it was mandated by Microsoft, and, and we did adhere to that request and followed, followed the law in regards to the NDA. And the property owners fell into that category, too. All of these worked together to get us across the finish line to finalize the sale of this property this week. At this point, Microsoft has not given the county any information regarding possible jobs nor a site plan for the mega park. However, considering Microsoft's internationally known high-tech reputation, everyone does eagerly await Microsoft's future plans for Person County. And again, I say that we, we do hope that they will see fit to give us some further information soon, I would say. So again, that ball's in their court. Person County EDC and government did its part, again, of getting the ball across the finish line and, and making that purch, purchase finalize last week. Another concern I have is regarding PCBIC. In the July meeting of this board, I circulated a suggested list of changes in organizational changes in EDC, PCBIC. That list was not shared with EDC or PCBIC. Only a rough draft was presented to that board, which I had sent President Allen at an earlier point, when I discovered that it had not been shared, the list that we sent. I later emailed the final version of suggestions to all ECPCBIC members for their consideration. And at this point, the list of suggestions has not been discussed by PCBIC. So I am requesting that PCBIC President Allen present to this board at a next regular meeting a status report on pending changes in the organization, in particular, how it intends to operate in the future as a nonprofit organization, which it is. Another concern that I have I think is important to all of us. As a board, I believe, we share the thought that county employees are our most important asset. They work hard to carry out the will of this board on a daily basis and deserve the best possible benefits we can provide. Approximately one year ago, I requested the county seek input from employee benefit providers that would ensure employees had the best possible coverage at the best possible cost to the county. At that time, a review of the benefits package was conducted by staff, and the decision was made to remain with the, at that time, the current provider. That process was done in-house with limited input from commissioners that was done by phone, not in a regular meeting. At that time, I shared thoughts that the employees may not be getting the best benefit package available, nor the county getting the best possible deal for its money expended to, to employee benefits. I think it imperative that this board protects taxpayers' money at the same time, ensure that our employees get the best possible coverage at the best possible price. And I have been advised by some of the providers that there could be a significant savings to the county and maintain the coverage or better. So I request that Manager Kathy arrange to have at least three providers make fifteen-minute presentations each to this board at our next board meeting for consideration and possible recommendations of a provider going forward. And that concludes my comments. And Manager Kathy?
Okay, so I wanted to remind everybody about voting tomorrow. The polling locations are open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Everyone should vote at their assigned precinct and bring a valid photo ID to do so. Curbside voting is available for individuals who cannot enter the building. So just encourage everybody to get out and vote who hasn't taken advantage of the early voting process, and tomorrow is the day to do that. And just to follow up on what you had just mentioned about the benefits brokers. So we did go through an RFP process last year, which is a lengthier process to get information out. So as far as having a presentation from three providers on November the eighteenth, that will not allow time to go through a process to identify those in a structured way. So I am interested in hearing a bit more about what the board would be looking for. Just, you know, we, we may be able to provide some, some different options or approaches to take a closer look at this, but there certainly would not be time to do an RFP process in advance of the next meeting.
So what would your definition of a structured presentation be there then? How long are you talking about? A week? Six weeks? Thirty days?
I believe the RFP process that we went through last time followed a thirty-day timeframe. I'd have to go back and look. You know, we generally do not go out for broker RFPs on an annual basis, but it is our broker who we've engaged through a contract to act on our behalf to bid out our health plan, which is the main driver of our benefits package each year to determine that we are getting the best deal for our employees through our health plan. So that is what we would do in advance of our next renewal period.
Well, I don't have any problem with what you're saying. I, I just think the approach at the last time was flawed. It didn't have enough information in there, and the question was floated to the commissioners by phone and not in an open discussion. So I don't think the commissioners really knew what the options were, the impact of, the comparative data. And so all of that could be done, and I'm not, and I'm not asking for a, a vote to direct you. I am asking for a presentation to be made so these gentlemen can hear that and give their opinions there. Are we providing the best possible package for our employees at the best price? And I think that's important because, and I shared this, that the difference there was significant. And I remember two. I don't remember the third provider. But I just, I don't think that the information shared to this board in support of was sufficient. So, so if we were to do that, we could still do that. And again, it's, it's not anything official, other than getting the information for this board and, and providing an opinion or advice to you going forward. So if, if I were a provider, I think if I were given the opportunity or made the request to, as a provider, I would respond in the timeframe that it's being asked for. So my opinion. All right. Christopher Sims?
No comment.
Mr. Palmer?
Sure. Had a busy last couple of weeks. I did go to the Employee Recognition Day last Thursday or Friday at the Personality Festival. Went to retirement for Chief Deputy John Walker, Sheriff's Department. And I'd like to remind everybody, if you don't know, this Saturday at the Veterans Park, eleven o'clock, we'll have a Veterans recognition, recognition service at eleven o'clock here across the way right here, near Park.
Saturday?
Eleven o'clock.
They're doing a breakfast, too, aren't they?
They are doing a breakfast, but I don't, I forget the...
I don't know. It's at the Moose Lodge, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, they are doing the breakfast.
Okay. Well, entrance party, can find that out. Thank you. Commissioner Perry?
No report.
Commissioner Thomas?
Just like thanking everyone for coming out to Personality. I had the opportunity to help up there for that weekend. And Mr. Sims, we had a good time and a lot of great turnout. And I want to take time to thank all the veterans for all the hard work that they do for our community. They have a strong bond between each other. That is one strong knit group. And we're very proud of them and, and very thankful for all their hard work for the veterans in this county.
Well said. Thank you. If there's no other business to conduct, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Chairman Powell?
Motion to adjourn. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.